First thing on the agenda is to... if we have any additions or subtractions, or removals, or adjustments. I don't. Is anyone else? Subdivisions is on there, Kevin.
Thank you.
We just checked, didn't we?
I did that earlier today.
Okay. Nothing, hearing nothing. We'll move on. We have... does anyone else have another minutes? Anybody else want? Review and approve the minutes from February 4th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from February 4th.
Okay. Bill's seconded. Any discussion? Changes? Okay. Anyone make a motion to approve?
That's what we did.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right, so is everyone in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved for February 4th. Okay, so administrative matters. I wanted to talk a little bit about the March meeting schedule. Chris, you told me that one date in March you can't do.
The first Tuesday is when they count... is the election day.
Okay. It's the day after. Right, it's the day after town meeting.
Yeah, it's the day of the election.
Right, it's the day of the election. Okay, so we won't have a meeting that night. And we're scheduled to have a meeting on the 3rd Tuesday, but I am not going to be here. But that doesn't mean we can't have a meeting.
So no meeting March 3rd?
Right.
The 3rd Tuesday is when?
Well, I guess we could have it in another place. This is canceled because I think we'll all have, you know, hopefully we'll all be going to a town meeting the night before and so we stick our X night off. Okay? Better see you all at town meeting. But then for the 3rd Tuesday, I'm not going to be here, but...
That'd be March 17th?
Yeah, that doesn't mean we can't... a meeting cannot be held, which it seems like it should. So we can keep moving forward on the work. You'll lead it. So who...
I like these people. I'll be here.
You can all wear green.
Or orange.
Or orange. And so I believe that you will have to... wait, you're my vice chair. You're my sub-chair.
Co-chair.
Co-chair.
It's good of you to remember.
I remember. I don't... but it's hard to because...
Well, now it's coming due.
Yeah. Now you're gonna have to act on it. So Bill will be in charge. Bill Brennan will be in charge. We will send you everything you need to know. You can talk to Andrew on what he has in store. Okay, that's good.
So set the date?
That's the 17th. That's the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, good. So for old business, we have subdivision regulations and we have a copy. I printed out a copy right here and Chris is going to get everybody an electronic copy.
They were already emailed?
What?
They were just emailed.
Oh.
Magical.
Now, if... so if you want a hard copy... do you want a hard copy, Lloyd?
I'll make copies as we speak.
Yeah. It's quite a... and it's a marked up copy.
So that's the entire...
Yes.
Okay, that's not mobile copies.
No, this is the whole thing.
That's what I was...
Because what is it is it's mostly the regs, the zoning regs, that have the subdivision piece worked into them. So because of that, certain references, certain, you know, they had to be tied together and there was pieces in the zoning regs. I mean, you can... when I'm done, you can fill in. Because the zoning regs also describes how the different municipal bodies are formed. And because we're going to have subdivision regs, those change, so that has to be changed in the zoning. So there's a lot of cross-referencing, et cetera. So there's... go ahead, Chris.
So one of the biggest things is there's two ways you can adopt subdivision regulations for community. One is to stand alone regulations or one create what is defined by subdivision, Unified Planning Document, which takes your zoning and your subdivision regs and melds them into one. It's a better document because if not, you have a lot of the kind of good things like definitions. That way you make sure your definitions are the same throughout all of your planning information. You base your UPD on your town plan. So this is the first go-round of a unified planning document. And it incorporates the subdivision regs, adds some new... a few new definitions and some minor modifications. Everything is in the email that I sent is well marked up, so that it's very clear what changes were made. If there's any questions.
Is everyone familiar with track changing? Track, are you?
If it works. If it works.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what this looks like. That's how this was done. So exists stuff that was in here before in the zoning regs that was taken out. It's blue and has a strike through it, but you can still see... you can still see it. And whatever is added new is red, underlined.
So what does this actually represent? Is this the new zoning regulations, the new iteration of the zoning regulations?
With the subdivision regulations in them. And because they are, instead of having, as Chris said, separate subdivision regulations packaged in a separate zoning regs, which we have the zoning regs, there's repetition in the two. If you put them together...
Got it.
So the only changes at this point that are in there are the subdivision regs. So the plan of attack is instead of trying to muddy the waters with making zoning changes and subdivision regs at one... at the same time, my logic was let's review the subdivision regs as part of this unified planning document, agree that it looks good from top to bottom, and then go through the half a dozen or so changes that... recommendations of changing some uses, some zones, some things like that. So I didn't want to try to do it all in one shot. I just thought it would muddy the waters greatly. So instead was let's focus on getting this piece of it agreed upon and then we'll do the next step on that stuff.
Okay.
Where did this template come from?
Well, we had our zoning.
Right.
And then Adam Loogin did this. So I don't know where he got the subdivision.
He?
Adam. But they're out there.
So I haven't had... is it basically the same format as before?
Yeah.
Exactly the same format.
So if you were to just flip through it, you would see the beginning of this is mostly the zoning. You can see the different districts, the different... and they talk about the dimensional standards.
It's unchanged. It's unchanged.
None of the content of the zoning regs should be changed.
The only real change that occurs throughout the content on a regular basis is the references. Zoning Board is changed to DRB, Development Review Board. Because the zoning board, if these are adopted, goes away. You create a Development Review Board. The other piece of changes are the duties based on which board does what. Basically, the Planning Commission will do planning. The Development Review Board will do all reviews. We'll have all the hearings. You all will have hearings anymore. So that's really the top-level change that you'll see throughout the document. When you look through all the track changes, you'll see that everywhere it was ZBA or zoning board of adjustment was a reference. It is now referenced as the DRB or the Development Review Board.
So the... just to clarify, the Planning Commission, as we are constituted now, will no longer have hearings. It will go to the Development Review Board, which will be another committee.
Yep. Basically, it'll be what the... that's the next piece is figuring out who wants to do what. It's the next step will be get the verbiage down and then figure out what those two boards look like. The... we have a current zoning board. We have a current planning commission. Finding out where people want to sit, what are your preferences, what do people want to do. And that's working with the two boards and the select board and giving proper appointments to folks. Because it doesn't make sense to sit on the planning board if you really, really love sitting through hearings or vice versa. If you don't ever want to do hearings and you're really into planning, this is the right table. So making sure that we place the right people in the right locations to best of the town.
So there's some stuff in here that's highlighted yellow. What's the significance of that?
Those were pieces where we had more discussion... Adam and I had more discussion to have on those. There are no significant changes in those pieces, like you'll see like extraction of gravel, PUDs, parking lots, access approval. Those are changes... any changes that were made in those sections are very clear. Like the access approval, the big thing we changed on that. We used to talk about access approval as far as part of the process here. There's already a town policy where the select board approves curb cuts, so we incorporated that into that portion.
So that would be yellow instead of strike-through for add-on?
When they... in the table contents, it's yellow. Throughout the document, it is the... The track changes, the strike-through and/or track changes were applied to those portions.
Yeah, and I'm seeing yellow on the field too.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now. Why did we do this?
There's a bunch of things. Separate dwelling units.
Yep.
It seems like maybe these were things that we might be talking about more.
Yes. So the yellow are things that we still need, that we would... that have nothing to do with subdivisions, but are changes that we need to discuss as a board. The subdivision section, which is... Meat potatoes of the subdivision, which is what I really like people to review.
It's in the back. Let's see. It starts.
What are the colors here? Yellow, red, anything else?
Page eighty.
There's basically red and yellow.
It's the section that's all red.
Okay, red is brand-new, right?
Yeah.
And it also says subdivision regulations.
And yellow is more discussion, right?
That is correct. So Article 9 is labeled subdivision regulations. Start on page 78.
I have eighty. Then whatever. You might have changed some things since then.
I just opened the document. I have it. And it continues down through to page 93 on my... And that may be the old numbering scheme that didn't carry over. Let me just double-check.
Yeah, there's a bunch of yellow in that.
Yeah.
So this is the first go-round of... we were able to get most everything done. What are the key pages for the subdivision? What is it? What pages are there?
Well, I have something different than Chris does. You said, starting at 78?
In the table contents, it says 78.
Seventy-eight to what?
But it's also...
Ninety-one?
It's also Section 9.
Section 9?
Yeah.
Yeah, Article 9.
So as a committee, we should concentrate on that.
That is what I would like.
For the next meeting. Good. Okay.
And it seems like from just a very quick look, the yellow, some... there's other sections that are highlighted yellow. It almost seems like we need to look at this and make sure this is right, or does this apply?
Anytime there was yellow or things that we need follow-up, because we need to make sure that the cross-references were correct. Some more renewed verbiage that may or may not make sense. Or it's old verbiage that we should address because it's either out of date or should be modified.
Could I get a copy of that before I leave tonight? Thanks.
I'll try to print copies here, everybody.
Yeah, include me too, please, Chris.
Yeah, like I said, I'll try to get copies here the next semester for everybody.
Is anybody having trouble with Google Docs? Because I couldn't get on it, aren't I? No? You were fine?
Yeah, no problem for me. I don't use it.
Yeah, okay.
Obviously, that works for me too.
I couldn't... I couldn't get on it.
Okay. So we got it. We're moving forward on that. Thank you, Chris.
So on the 17th, is Adam going to be here or is it the commission plus Chris?
I don't know what we're gonna do on the 17th.
What do you think, Kevin?
We can decide. I mean...
I would like Adam to be here for the next discussion.
Right.
Give you guys a few weeks to review the document, have any questions. Myself, I'm just making sure right now that I am available. I believe I am. Yeah, I'm not... I'm in town that week, so I will be here for the 17th meeting. And we'll go for that.
And the meeting after that...
I'm sure.
The meeting after that is the April meeting where we're going to have the open house, which is...
That's April 7th?
Right, so that's the following meeting. So...
Right.
We need... I need to be organized before I go. I'm going to be gone for a little bit. So in the agenda... I'll do the agenda for the 17th. We need to know, and maybe we should decide tonight exactly what we're going to show at the open house so we can get those things ready. And then we just work on that. Does that sound like a good idea? Or decide now at the end of this meeting. And I guess it can get reviewed at the meeting on the 17th, just to make sure everyone's okay with everything. But... Do you want to wait till after that to have Adam here? I think maybe. I would like to be here. I mean, that will give people a chance to look at the subdivision, you know, a little more chance. We've got this other stuff going on.
Well, what would be the agenda for the 17th then?
Well, the 17th...
We've got more stuff with Andrew this weekend.
Oh, for the 17th?
We've got more.
Yeah, but there's some... you know, we want to have the bulk of the sections done and anything with big maps. And, you know, kind of decide what we're going to have at the open house. So any of those sections, we should have those pretty well fleshed out in terms of goals and that sort of thing at the end of that meeting.
But the end of...
At the end of the 17th. Does that make sense? So that then we know what we're going to be preparing.
So these are how the visuals ready?
Yeah, but also we have goals, you know, goals and policies.
There are specific sections that...
Yeah, well, I will... I can put something together. We can put something together, make... or we can do it here, I think, in the meeting, decide what we want to show. And then we can outline how that we're going to do that. So I think that we should see if we can meet with Adam the following meeting, later in April. The second meeting in April. Does that work for everybody?
Who's going to contact him?
Oh, I think we can...
You do. So that would be the meeting on the 21st of April.
Okay.
Because you've got to figure in, I think you have to have two public hearings, send it to the select board. They have to have a public hearing and then a public folks. If you're shooting for August, probably the absolute latest you want to have your first meeting with Adam.
Right.
Well, so we're saying the 21st for Adam or not?
Maybe we should have him come. I mean, maybe he could come. What do you...
I would start with 17th. I mean, there's nothing going to be filed.
I mean, I can always... I can always talk to him about it separately. Maybe that would be better. Maybe that would be better to do.
Well, it would be better because if we're going to do the subdivision and concentrate on that over the next several weeks, it'd be great if he was here.
Right. We can't let the plan go, because plan has to be done at a certain time, too.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. We don't... yeah, by the end of May.
Right, so they both have to be done in order to make your August primary.
Yeah, so we can't... we've got to do both. So we have to... So if we have the subdivision regs now, maybe it would be good to get a first meeting with Adam, kind of get that underway. There may be a lot of, you know, issues and questions that we can then get that ball rolling.
So that's on the 17th. But then we're going to have to have some time on the 17th to get what we're going to present on April 7th.
Right, well, we can, you know, we can get that ready and we can decide at the end of this meeting what we're doing.
Okay. Good.
Clear as mud.
So Adam's here on the 17th?
Yes.
Of March.
If he's available.
I'll be home tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So, new business.
New business?
Andrew.
This is really old business. An old business was coming in this business. So I'd send out a couple of copies of the flood resilience section, the land use section, and seating historic and cultural resources, just to go ahead and knock that one out.
Yep.
So I think sort of what I'd like to do is basically just start from the top, the flood resilience. The land use one, I did not make many changes, other than adding wording for the flood resilience and forest fragmentation parts, which I'll give you feedback on. I got comments from Bill and Kevin on the flood resilience part, and I'm incorporating those. Most of the things in the body of the text, I think, are pretty minor. Some places where Kevin noticed that things made no sense, which I appreciate. Some descriptions of areas that were not contiguous and other things. But I think what I like to do, if it's all right, is kind of go through, like we've done before with the goals, policies, and actions, and just make sure since that's...
On which one, land use?
No, let's start with flood resilience and go ahead and get that done. And unless folks have questions about the body itself, pull... a lot of it is pulled from the existing local hazard mitigation plan.
Yep.
Which is why, as Kevin noticed, the line about a winter storm got copied in along with flooding and landslide duty flooding.
So you want to contract it on page five, the goals, policies, and actions?
Yes, please. The goals, policies, actions. We're going to take a second to read through. Kevin, I've got your comments.
Okay. So...
These are the original ones, but we can talk about the things that you proposed or pass them up. Would it be easiest to just kind of walk through for me to read it out loud? Just go through the goals and then talk about questions or concerns?
Yep.
So goals: Work to make the town of Bristol a flood-resilient community. So the reason that's capitalized, flood-resilient community, is a program from the state basically saying, go through and look at basically where your buildings are to make sure people know if they're in a flood hazard area. And if folks want to see, which is the checklist. But this is very much a work towards basically if a flood hits, making it so that basically we're ready. Some of it is addressed in the... Maintaining... there were some references, I think, to ERAF, which comes up later. So that's coming into play for Bristol right now with some of the Halloween flooding, basically to meet the state requirements so that you get additional funding in addition to federal funding after disasters.
So is it... I haven't read that. So is there anything that... If we're saying that we're working to make Bristol a flood-resilient community, are there very specific requirements in there that are not listed in here?
No, so it's basically the same requirements as there are for the section overall. So designated areas to be protected to reduce the risk of flood damage. Identify river corridors, but not additional requirements for passing for overlays or other zoning things. Recommend policies and strategies to protect areas adjacent to rivers, floodplains, wetlands. Encourage flood resilient communities. Avoid new residential development in flood hazard areas.
And so if you're a flood-resilient community, do you get a higher percentage of...
No, this is all...
Okay.
There's some separate programs that kind of overlap for flood insurance, but that's not related to this. I mean, it's other than that it is flood measures.
If we're referring to a specific program as a state program, can we refer to the program as that?
Sure. Or would it be better to be more general, to say to be resilient?
I mean, to me, that just doesn't mean anything, but now that you're talking about it's part of the state program and it's got outlines, I don't know, I didn't hear requirements, but recommendations and hand-to-hand-to-hand. I think we should be clear about that.
What page do you want?
It says the first goal that we're talking about and what a flood-resilient community is. We just have more information on there as to what that means. I mean, we could have a footnote and a link to this. This site, right? This is a specific site.
Yeah, and the sort of first requirement for the flood resilience element is to encourage flood-resilient communities. So I think that's why it's... and there is the first goal. But maybe instead of capitalizing this and referring to that program, we do that later on as a policy to sort of work towards and have the goal itself be a more general goal about flood resilience. So goal number two, maintain and protect water resources to limit and mitigate flood-related damage. Goal three, continue to maintain and upgrade as needed town road infrastructure to withstand potential flood events.
To me, that seems more tactical than a goal. I don't know if that'd be a policy, maybe. Same with the fourth bullet as well. Sometimes we'll talk... we'll talk about them both at the same time or not. Yeah, I see your point, but where would we put it? On the actions? To me, it sounds like a policy. Could be. Might be a couple easier way.
I'm going to stealth, put in my vote for combining policies and actions, because then we don't have to decide if it's a policy or action. And a lot of plans are like that, actually, I've been noticing. And it just makes it simpler and less repetitive.
Yeah, there's a lot of redundancy. There's no question about it.
So we need to kind of...
Something about it.
I don't know. We talked about that briefly before. I don't know if people... we didn't... I really didn't get a sense of how people felt about it, though. So how do people feel about combining those two?
So when you have actions, they're assignable, so you would end up... was it in the last chapter you say all these actions, who's going to do them? Would you still do that if they were combined?
Right. So part of one of the requirements, and I'm learning all this by reviewing other towns' plans right now, because there's a state... one of the state requirements that you have to meet in the plan is to have your implementation. You have to have goals and policies, which we do. And then you have an implementation section at the end. And you don't have to assign every single action and policy in your plan, but you need to kind of have a plan, a actual plan moving forward. Say in the next so many years, we would like to look at these actions. We'd like to make these things happen in this many years and then this many years. And it's... you can kind of design it the way you want to design it. So... and then some, in our plan, it was a big matrix in saying what, you know, what part of the local government's going to take, going to actually make that happen. Is it the road crew? Is it the planning commission? Is it the select board? So we... that's how we've done it in the past. Other towns do it differently.
So there's more flexibility.
There's a lot of flexibility. We just have to have some kind of implementation plan. I mean, I've seen plans that have like seven policies that they say they're going to do in the next 10 years or eight years. And they just have seven things, you know?
Sounds pretty innocuous to me.
So there's no format that you have to adhere to. So that's why I think the... it is hard, it is complicated, the policy versus action, you know? I don't know if you're feeling on this. I think there's a lot of... I think there's a lot of redundancy.
If we reformat like that, there's a lot that can be, would have to be stripped out.
Yeah.
And not just combine it and have one mash of weekends instead of nine and 11, you know, in some of these sections.
I think we could, I think we could thin it out a bit. Like already, thinning the goals out, some, you know, sort of one goal for the section. We could have one goal for the section. That's my feeling. And then with a bunch of policies and actions are that bring you to that goal or work towards that goal.
So the one goal would be to make...
Well, right now, after talking about this, would be maintain and protect water resources to limit and mitigate flood-related damage.
Yeah.
Keep it simple.
I mean, in some places, it seems appropriate. There may be some, without going through section by section, I'm sure there's other sections where it's appropriate to have more goals. Because it's more complicated.
So where do we want to go from here?
We should probably decide as a group how we want to proceed with that, especially once we're getting...
It's not a large rewrite, really. It's a thinning out.
Well, we'd have to revisit each section.
Well, we have, we've sort of, you know, some of them we've done that we haven't really gotten through. It seems like a lot of, we've looked at some of the bodies, but not all the goals. Some of them, we've worked pretty well, but...
Right, even though we'd have to go back to and look at reformatting as well.
Yeah.
So would it make sense for us to put all those together in one document? Without the longer section, which is like, here's the goals for this section?
If we decide to move forward in a goal and then second part, however that's termed, then that's how it should probably, that would probably be best handled.
So this would be upfront, in front of every section, you got our goals?
I think...
And then policy plus actions. This is how we...
Typically, we've had it at the end of our sections. No, some plans have...
Sense of where we are with this.
I think it would just be a restructuring of the goals, policies, and actions bit that's still in the same place at the end of the section. What I was thinking you were talking about.
So is Andrew going to rewrite this or who's going to?
Well, we've been talking about it.
Are you not going to?
No.
I don't know. What's everybody else's feeling on it? Because we haven't really, I don't know, I think we should formally decide if this is what we want to do or not before we get too far down this.
Right. There's a lot, there's a lot of sections that have been reworked and re-formatted, but the goals and policies haven't been really gone through. And I think that if we were to do that, we could probably find things that we could take out. Because...
I'm more for being concise with this, but...
But we need to, we still have time to do that. I mean, this is...
Yeah, it would be...
It's really kind of the pulling together.
Good to have, I think, sort of goals for the next...
It's evaporating quick, though, that time.
We're getting there now. Well, that could be...
That's, yeah, that's awesome.
Possibly. No, I'm...
But we can, we can work on it and sort of present, I guess. Maybe have a rough, well, we could talk about this at the end, but if we're going to have sort of maps and things for each section at the open house, then we should probably have the goals.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to have that for that open house.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we could just be sending stuff around.
So should we decide how we want to proceed with this now?
Because everything in the open house really is a draft.
Is that what you're saying?
What?
Should we try to decide how we want to proceed with this now?
Well, we can go around to a straw poll or we can vote. Do we have, we're missing a couple people.
Or get caucus.
Uh, we get caucus, yeah.
I'm not kidding.
We get three choices, but there's only two.
Do we have to vote at the caucus?
Yeah, but it's through an app. No one will know for weeks.
Okay. I think Rob's right. Let's make a decision on it. I personally like to see this. The simpler the better.
Right.
You know, if you can, because there's just a lot of verbiage in all this stuff.
Yeah.
So if we can condense it down into something, the goals are the big picture, right? Then policies and actions follow. So, yeah. I don't know what those words are, but I'm hoping.
It's all about editing, I think, more than adding some.
Well, I think, I mean, we had talked about having just one or two goals per section and then having policies that kind of went with those specific goals. And then if actions are something we want to get rid of or reduce to a manageable number that can be carried out by whoever it's assigned to, then I think we could reduce those quite a bit.
Yeah. So, how do you feel about it, Lloyd?
Yeah, I think it was good to take out any repetition and whatever. Take out the unnecessary verbiage.
Thing I like about this concept, this concept is, right now, there is so much stuff in there and sometimes it's like you're just making, they're making it cumbersome, if you will, with all this stuff that doesn't get done or nobody pays attention to language. So if we become more concise with it and end up with six, eight, 10 things that are really important to be actionable and you have the flexibility to figure out what those are across all the parts, I think you're going to end up with a lot better document than a big spreadsheet that says you're going to, you know, it's like, where's going to do this? And everybody folds it up and puts it in a drawer for five years.
Yeah, and someone might actually read this plan, I'm hoping.
When we get done, it's going to be really nice to have it read. That's for sure.
Well, I agree with that. And I think actually in the, that gave me an idea for the open house. As if we had, you know, more, you know, goals and some actions below or policies and actions. And then maybe at the end, have some, you know, have a question, have a table. What do you think are the, you know, top two, three things you'd like to see your, see happen with this plan? You know? That would be really having public input, true public input, if people come to the open house. Piss it off. Piss it off, yeah. Bill?
Well, the simpler the better. The simpler it is, the more impact you have. If it's convoluted, people say, who cares? So I agree with Kevin, Lloyd, Tom, you, and Andrew, and probably not, although she's spoken yet.
Some of it will be, like, this first policy is something that's basically one of the required statements for this section. So if we can check and make sure we're hitting all the requirements, which may...
Okay, well, let's go through, keep going through them then.
These requirements are where, where, Andrew?
So for the flood resilience element, basically the...
It's a state issue, right?
Yeah. Flood resilience plan. So a lot of it is maps and identifying areas. So the two maps, let's pick one out. And then recommending policies and strategies. Protection and restoration of floodplains and upland forested areas that attenuate flooding. So there's a couple sort of statements that they require, actually, in the requirements. So...
Do you want to go through these then?
Sure. The policies?
Yeah.
Starting with policies? Yeah. So...
So one's a given.
Yeah, so one...
Is there any way to track for future requirements? Yes. Things that we have in our plan that are required by X. Because next time we go through this, we're going to say, why does this say this? Who wrote this?
Right.
And nobody's going to remember that it was...
If it's driven by state statute, we should be saying, or law regulation, we should be saying.
Maybe we have an asterisk.
Yeah, a footnote. I don't care how you do it, but...
Just impairments, it's...
I agree.
Because anybody that picks it up now and looks at it goes, why did you do that?
It's like the appendix.
If nobody that was here knew, it was, it's telling us.
Dumb planning commission again.
Okay.
All right.
As required.
Mitigate, so Kevin, I know you've got a question on this next one. Mitigate risks to public safety, critical infrastructure, historic structures, and municipal investments.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, there's a few different places where it talks about things. And I'm not, it doesn't, I guess I'm concerned about it. Are we trying to protect private property or public property essentially? And if we're trying to protect private property, what business does a town have doing that?
Well, it's public safety.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not just property.
I disagree. Well, public...
What is public safety, I guess?
Well, no, I'm specifically talking about historic structures. So...
Like, like, hallway hall?
Hallway hall, yeah, okay, I understand that. But my house, why would the town care if it goes down the street in a flood or whatever, you know?
Well, why can't we just say on municipal and private investments?
But you're saying no private.
I'm not sure that...
No, I...
I mean, the policy is to protect all of the investments in Bristol, not just municipal.
Yeah, but some, the town has control of them, some that not so much for private. But even that, you know, can improve the drainage off. Well, mountain streets are going to make me better for the, all the streets below there.
But if we're mitigating risk to public safety, then also it's mitigating risk to Kevin's home.
Private property.
Okay.
I have a bike park.
I don't know.
Do a purpose.
It seems pretty clear to me.
Yeah, I can see that, structures is kind of the lone...
That's the standout that isn't specific to public safety. Not speaking to anything like that.
It's general.
Critical infrastructure would refer, one would imply to roads and that kind of stuff. And then municipal. So the historic structure is the only one that's not clear.
And municipal investment is, could be a historic structure.
Right.
Just take historic structures out of those structures.
I mean, I think...
Is that, yeah?
Yeah. By protecting, especially the village area, you are protecting both public and private historic structures. But whether that needs to be a policy, sort of specified.
Unless it was like landmarks instead of, you know, even then, you could kind of get into that, but...
Okay. So folks, okay taking out historic structures in that?
Although we, well, I mean, why not?
We do have a scenic historic cultural resources section.
I mean, they are, it is important.
A lot of historic buildings.
You know?
There is an address.
So how is this thing reading?
We don't know. We're talking about it. Do you really have a problem with this? I see what you're saying, but I mean, we're, it's general. It is general. It is a plan. We're not saying we're going to be liable for...
A lot of it goes back to my comment a few minutes ago. And it's just like you've got all this stuff in there that really is kind of not necessarily germane and it just makes the plan dilute to the company.
Well, I think, let's go through the rest of them and start putting a question...
So in all cases, I would see that including private properties like this, where you have the historic, where most of your historic is private, would be if it was an Act 250 hearing, if somebody wanted to utilize this aspect of flooding that by building something a mile up the road may change the river, blah, 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 which could offset a 180-year-old house, because you don't define historic structure. It's very gray. So you either omit it or you need to define it more.
National Historic Landmark Designated.
Yeah, or, or public historic structure. Add the word "public" to it and then that eliminates the private household. It is more of a, so, I don't know.
But then you have municipal investments, which would be the public historic structure. Correct? If it's a municipal investment.
I think when you say historic structure, all of a sudden brings a whole different connotation than some, something that was built 20 or 50 years ago as well.
Right. So that'd be my only contempt of the historic structure would be the, it's a little ambiguous what it is.
I said take it out because we're adding, we're doing all that stuff.
Let's take it out.
So historic structure is out?
Yes.
Well, that wasn't too bad.
Well, number two.
Number three, number three.
Moving to three.
If we had less, we'd have less to talk about.
Provide restrictions and setbacks.
Is that where we're going with it?
To less of them?
Well, if we can get, if we can get some out, but since we started, you know, right, if we can.
Yeah, so if we're going to move forward with that, why don't we look at this as, what's not needed, what's needed?
Right.
And trim it down?
Well, I think we're on that.
Instead of working through all of these.
So it seems to me then the third one, provide restriction and setbacks in an effort to protect waterways and blah, 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 that gets extremely specific. So, I mean, policies, you know, overlapping policies, number two is pretty good. It's an overlapping policy. Then we're getting into the minutia. I don't think we should get into the minutia on policies. We'll be here forever.
What are you thinking?
Andrew, did you write this? Because I apologize, I apologize for any...
So do we presently have restrictions and setbacks all along waterways in our zoning?
Yes. Fifty feet?
Yeah, I think it's...
Fifty feet, 100 feet, something like that.
Fifty.
That's on the waterway.
The contentious, how's that measure? Along the bank or horizontal.
It's at the top of the banks, it's at the top of the banks, that says. So, that's, that, that policy's ineffective.
Yeah, I mean, that has a pretty direct correlation to your zoning regulations, since it says zoning regulations.
But it's a policy we're already acting on, at least, you know?
My question was, that, what, if it's consistent with what?
Yeah.
You know, straight rings or whatever, you know?
Well, I think, yeah. So I think you want to have stuff like this in your policies so that your zoning regs can then say, as stated in the town plan, we want to have these setbacks. And then you define it more specifically in that. And if it changes through the zoning process, then you don't have it in two places. So you wouldn't say, X number of feet here.
I'm okay with the standard system, you're not going to, we're not increasing the restriction.
Which one are you talking about?
Third bullet.
So may, maintain setbacks or have setbacks?
Provide restrictions? Or maybe we're maintaining them as opposed to providing them then?
Well, you get to maintain restrictions at, per the zoning regulations, blah, blah, blah. But that's what it says, through zoning regulations. But I see the inference there, is it going to get more restrictive?
Yeah, I think that that one...
And we don't want that.
I think that's going to cause a lot of problems, that one.
Yeah, I think that would open it to more restriction.
We already have setbacks, correct?
Hmm, that's what I'm checking. I almost think we stripped them out last time on purpose.
What?
Now remember 50 foot. Nothing can be built within 50 feet of the...
We talked about the 20 feet, so we rely on, not just the flood hazard regs aspect of it. Let's... Use the Death and the Shoreline Protection Act when in... Try to build in the floodplain.
This is fine?
Control F.
Bang the phone.
So would something like just taking out that first clause and just leaving it as protect waterways and watersheds through zoning regulations?
That makes more sense. Yeah.
And then the zoning regulations are where you.
It doesn't have the.
The issue I have with that is why would you add another layer of complexity? The state wetland program and the state shoreline protection already covers both your primary waterways and covers any wetlands. So why would you want to include zoning into that?
If there's not already a zoning piece.
What you're saying, Chris, that's redundant.
Yeah, it, it creates, you're setting yourself up to create yet another layer of.
Of zoning.
So fifty feet at the top of banks, which is.
And that also, and then the actions, there's, there are some similar statements like that as well.
Right, section five thirteen.
Why don't we just eliminate?
Number three.
I'm for that.
Oh, yes, there we go.
So the watershed predictions are all based on the federal and state requirements?
Right.
Article eight flood hazard area regulations or any other regulations here in any new structure, and it goes on to say, so, like fifty feet.
On perennial streams.
Okay, so basically the state shoreline protection then? There's not additional. So basically it's just enforce state and federal rules on development near wetlands and streams?
If we even want to take on.
Enforcing.
Enforcement. Sorry.
So what is the word? It is.
Discourage people from breaking state and federal law.
Well, you could say maintain, you could say maintain existing.
Require compliance with all state and federal laws regarding.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
Maintain compliance.
Yeah, Chris's suggestion sounds good to me.
Yeah.
To try continued observance of whatever the RFPs said. And that, that gets rid of the restriction business and the inference, we're gonna get more restrictive, but I don't think number three even has to be in there.
Okay, then I think the same applies for the next one too, the new development in known flood hazard areas, because that's a federal thing and class two wetlands is a state.
Yeah.
Okay.
So removing bullets three and four?
Yes.
So we were, we were kicking out three and four?
Yeah.
And then you. Well, and, and applies to them, which is require compliance with state and federal laws, requiring development.
Combining and reforming three.
Yeah, into one, basically to say, state and federal laws apply.
Okay.
Yeah, it kicks it back.
And then the maintenance of road infrastructure is pretty similar to that one.
I was gonna say, maybe we drop, drop that bullet and pull a gold bullet down.
That's great. I got more coming.
Thank you.
Into the policies.
Yeah, the road and bridge standards is something that's required under EREF, so I think in act is having this specific policy about maintaining those, the compliance with the road and bridge standards.
Okay.
Which one were you thinking?
That's the fifth one.
The maintaining and upgrade road infrastructure.
Oh, I thought that was the one that we were keeping in place.
So we'll footnote.
Oh, no, that, oh, it's the second one.
The footnote there as well.
Put that somewhere.
Yeah.
So three, four, and five are complete?
No, no.
No.
Because the road and bridge standards.
Not so fast.
What?
If you have those.
I just wanted you to know.
Need a reference to the, that five on the bullet, the policies needs to stay, because we need a reference to the road and bridge standards. It is what Andrew was saying.
So just so I'm understanding this, three and four are eliminated, and five, we're putting a reference to, is that correct?
As required by.
Yeah.
So what were you, what were you gonna add to five?
An asterisk.
Just a.
To say that it was. Yeah, as required, the road and bridge standards are required.
So that's part of the EREF requirements for.
So that's gonna be a footnote?
But is it, is it actually required or only required?
To get a certain.
To get funding, so that's different.
Correct.
It's not required, required.
I will just leave your verbiage as is, that you continue to maintain your road infrastructure, your compliance with the agency transportation camera. That can change, I wouldn't footnote it, I'd leave it just as it is, if you want to get into more minutia on that, I mean, you can deal with that at your zoning standards, when we talk about road standards or, or your, the town road policy.
Well, I think, don't you even mention that in the text? What the levels of.
Yeah, I think we have, basically how you hit, so. I'm gonna turn it around, but basically the, the town has, there's like five requirements, and if you hit those, you get an increasing amount of funding from the state post disaster.
Well, you've mentioned that this.
One of the basic ones is the, the road and bridge standards. Okay, so take Chris's suggestion and not add anything to that clause, but perhaps footnote it as one of the EREF requirements, and we can actually in the, in the actions, it talks about what level of state funding we want to aim for in EREF, so. That may need to be a policy rather than an action.
Well, they're all gonna be together, so you don't, we don't know where one starts and when the other begins.
That's the good thing about it. Okay.
So could we have a wrap up of what we've just done with the notes here?
So we've taken, well, we've, we've combined three and four into one, just requiring compliance with state and federal laws regarding development near flood hazard areas and class two wetlands.
So you combine three and four?
And reroute it, yes.
Yeah.
And reroute, okay, and what about the, the last one?
It stayed the same?
Yep.
Changed, but it's footnote it as a source.
Required for funding.
Not, not state, not required, it's not just a state requirement, it's required for specific funding.
All right.
Okay. Move on to actions. Review and update land use and development regulations in order to balance regulation of development in flood hazard river corridor areas.
I think that one goes out, because basically, yeah, it's sort of the same thing.
Yep. Conduct necessary steps to qualify for maximum state funding, which is seventeen point five percent from the emergency relief assistance fund. That may be not necessary, since we're basically going through what those requirements are here.
Would it make sense to, if we've got all those requirements here, would it make sense to have that there and then have some sub?
Right, so these are the components of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be more logical for organization.
And then would you bring down?
Yeah, because the next two are actually part of that. The local hazard mitigation plan is one of those.
I actually think we have a goal in the public health, the public health and safety section that's said to update the emergency management plan. So this is basically the same thing, we can have it in, I, I think we can have it in here too.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's two, there's like an annual plan, which I think is more focused on public health and safety. I mean, they all are, because it's.
I think it was the emergency management plan.
That is also one of the requirements for EREF funding, so. But I like sending out all those bullet points, that way it's clear why you're doing it. All right, so the next, so the local hazard mitigation plan is a separate five year plan that Bristol currently has signed off on last year, I believe. Consider river corridor protection regulations, so. That one's, that is, that is part of potential EREF funding, but is one that not a whole lot of communities do, because it usually entails adopting additional flood overlays or river corridor overlays, so I think that's why having it in there is consider and not adopt and pass.
Is there any, is there any hooks in that, that if you do, are you just doing overlays to understand certain aspects or something, or does it then turn around and require you to do some preventive based on?
So, yeah, there are, I mean, it's specific zoning requirements.
Like restrictions for.
The river corridor protection regulations does have some restrictions, and, and there are definitely people in this community who are not interested in doing that. We've had presentation on it before, it's something that is out there, you know, if you do it, it's, it's viewed as more restrictive.
You mean, it is more restrictive?
It is more restrictive, it's viewed as more restrictive, we had a, it's a hot topic, right?
Oh, absolutely.
If Bill was here, he would tell you that, Bill's not in favor of it. We, we did have a, you were at that, that was a big presentation, that, we, we had them come and give a presentation, we had a lot of conversation about it. One, one thing we did find out, if you did have a structure that is within a zone that was considered a setback, you can have another building as long as it's not within that zone, as long as it's not closer to the, to the river. But still, it's something that's viewed as being restricted. So, I mean, I don't think it's, there's harm in saying consider in here. I think as long as it's.
Does it gain us anything?
What?
Does it gain us anything mentioning it, considering it?
Not really.
Just a question.
No.
Okay, so I'm not clear, is it part of the?
If you do it, you get, yes, yes, it gets, if you, if your town adopts it, you get the highest percentage of funds for certain, I don't know how it all works, but, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically the last, so it's what, it'll take you from twelve and a half percent from the state to seventeen and a half, so just an extra five percent.
So, so that's that seventeen and a half percent mentioned in the bullet above, in order to get that, we would have to adopt?
Yeah.
The river corridor protection regulations?
Change that to.
Right.
Extent.
So, consider or adopt, so we consider it, it doesn't get us any money until we adopt it, right?
And even having just adopt in the plan, as part of the plan, wouldn't get us anything until we actually adopt it?
But if you say you want to adopt it, if you say our plan is to adopt it, that could, someone could grab hold of that and say, well, we're gonna do that.
Right, no, no, I'm not suggesting we put that in.
So saying that we're gonna consider it does nothing for us?
Unless you want to consider it, unless you want to have it out there, feel like, you know, I mean, it's, it's a.
From a town plan and procedural standpoint, the biggest thing it does is by including it in your actions or whatever it ended up being titled, when you go to rewrite your zoning, all of these consider pieces are things that, as you go through, as a planning commission, you then review and discuss and decide whether you want it. If it's consider, you have an, you have a discussion, you decide whether you want to include or not, you can omit it at that point. If you mandate it here, if you say you're gonna develop or you are going to.
Qualify for maximum.
Yeah, conduct necessary steps, you're, you're having yourself in that, you gotta get that done, versus let's make sure that it's in the plan, versus it's a mandatory piece.
Man, I, I think it's, I kind of think of it as further down the road, someone else, you know, it's in the plan, it gets considered at some point, maybe at some point, it's thought to be a great thing, you could Bristol, you know, twenty years down the road or something, I don't know. And, and maybe no one would know about it otherwise, maybe it'd be completely different at the time, I don't know. It's information, really, and it, it's in the plan, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, it's in the text, correct?
I guess I, I believe so.
Is this an existing goal or policy, or is this?
But it's a new section.
Is what, an existing policy?
So this, consider river corridors, is that in the current plan, or is it?
No, none of this is.
Okay, so this is.
This section is new.
Yeah.
I don't feel like incredibly strong either way, if it's gonna be an issue, I'm feeling not doing it, but I think it should get talked about in the text.
Yeah, I mean, I think shooting for the twelve and a half percent, which is a fairly standard, basically that's already where Bristol is, and then to, and have that bullet pointed, and then to say, consider river corridor protection regulations or protection overlay. Keeps it on the table, but.
I, yeah.
There'd be some consideration that improving some of these things would cost more than the twelve, twelve percent that you're gonna get back to get.
Okay, so folks, folks okay with keeping that, but separating it out so it's more clear?
Reluctant.
Not one of the. This next one, Kevin had a question on, and I actually was gonna ask you, does the town already have a GIS database that includes property boundaries, zoning districts, wetlands, et cetera? Or?
Yeah, and those are all the GIS maps that we utilize, and that's the, the current appendix of the town plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's what we do.
You mean like a.
What is not included is a river, we do not have a river corridor, I mean, that wouldn't be, because we don't have a river corridor plan, so we wouldn't include that.
Well, well, we have, now, there's, there's river corridor maps and river corridor plan are two different things. Right, explain. You explain, I stay.
So, yeah, so the requirements for this section are that you have a map of the river corridors, which are where the state has basically said, this is where the river wants to meander. That does not obligate you to adopt a river corridor overlay or protection regulations, that's a separate step, that you have to at least say, and having been around this last couple of months, it is definitely where it floods, but, so you have to acknowledge it with a map in your plan. And that, I think, goes, what Robert kind of asked was, is this a digital thing that is accessible versus just the paper maps that are part of the plan?
Paper at this point.
Okay, so it's all paper?
Well, that was my question, is this says develop and maintain digital mapping database, is that implying an interactive online one for the public, or a private informational database?
Or that it's just maintaining the printed map that's in the plan, and if somebody wants.
Well, I, the reason I raised that question is because I was thinking, or assuming, that regional planning had a GIS database and are doing all these maps, so we've, we've at least developed it now to some degree, so I'm not. So I'm not, in the semantics, really, maybe we're talking about too much, but it's really that we've got this database that we need to maintain as opposed to starting from scratch and developing.
Right, so I would say that you have already got a developed database, which we may not house it in-house. It's housed by Addison County Regional Planning. They say we pay to maintain our mapping and update as we need it. So you already have a, you have the database there maintaining it. Again, it's the reliance upon Addison County Regional to do that for you. The maps that are listed here, we do not currently have a river corridor map in our current town plan.
Well, that's part of, part of its grant.
Yeah.
That was the requirement.
This section is one of the major requirements for.
The, or a map of river corridor.
Well, I'm stating that we don't have one listed current. That's all I'm.
Right, right, right.
I'm not.
And the flood hazard ones are a little shaky, honestly, since they're from 1985. Oh, my nephew's there. Is that where you're giving that?
Oh, I, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
That's his, he's agreeing with you.
Oh, okay.
Enthusiastically agreeing with you.
FEMA and USGS are in, in the process of updating that.
Right, when is, when's the next FEMA update due?
They do, do they set due dates?
Okay, or when, when they have stacked it?
They have initiated a supposedly five-year process to update Addison County. So the next plan may have that. But I think it sounds like maybe take that out.
Just coordinate, coordinate with Addison County Regional Planning.
Or we just acknowledged in the text that.
Yeah, I don't think.
It doesn't need to be an action, it sounds like.
Well, you could almost eliminate just the word develop. I mean, you can maintain your digital mapping database and have it cover what you want it, what you're trying. You're saying you want to have, we have maps. Let's just keep them up to date and keep them maintained.
Okay. Looks all right with that.
With that, we'd want to make sure we're not calling out maintaining things we don't have.
So perhaps maintaining just maps? Rather than. So if, if ACRPC has the GIS.
Right, so you could. You could change it to develop, to maintain digital mapping database that may include the following, or examples of something like that. Your, your map list is really not list.
Right.
What about coordinate with Addison County Regional Planning to? Keep, you know, keep ma, you know, flood maps up to date or even just current?
Provide updated.
So it's more about the communication with Addison County Regional Planning to keep the maps up to date?
Yeah, you could continue your relationship with Addison County Regional Planning to, to update maps.
Okay, so it sounds like we need, yeah, some words missing on that one. Either coordinate or provide maps. Because I think, I think the gist of it is that basically folks can access them and see if they're buying properties or, you know, planning of something that's going to run into issues, either from permitting or from flooding. So making that available, which is. Yeah, just making sure we word that in a way that makes sense. So, but for now, coordinate with Addison County Regional Planning to maintain a digital mapping database. And provide maps of property boundaries, zoning districts, et cetera. Okay. The next one looks like it can be taken up. Develop a unified and simplified approach to defining zoning districts that interface with other resources and river quarters. Sounds like.
I mean, I like the, the concept, I just don't.
I, I know it belongs to you.
For my world, I'm like, oh, that's phenomenal, but.
As, as a, as a goal or an action?
How about taking it out? I mean, it seems like the previous one, we've kind of covered that. Although it's not.
Well, this is speaking more of the zoning districts, the, the actual zoning boundaries as opposed to maps of things.
So all the zoning districts are affected by water?
Trying to think of one that possibly couldn't be.
So basically, do you see some value in saying link this to your zoning land use districts? Or?
I'm trying to figure out.
Or do we just do that in the land use section and?
Just touch on it.
Sort of take this out to remove complication?
It seems to be.
Well, this is to develop a uniform and simplified approach, which doesn't actually say that we're going to actually change anything or define anything. It's just your approach reviews if we do it.
It just seems to be unnecessary. Okay. I don't see the necessity of it.
So I assume the vision, and again, just from my desk, is the, trying to create sort of a single stop off or? I mean, when I read that, I'm like, I have property XYZ. What are the, what are the current zoning regs? Or the, I mean, sort of a one-stop shop to get all the data I would need for a, either parcel or a zoning district. It's sort of what, how I read that. Is that what the, is that what the theory was?
Yeah, I think to make it, you know, so you didn't have the line for your one district, fifty feet over your line for the other district. And it turns out you're in the weird Venn diagram in between where you can do this, but you can't do it because of this other thing, so.
How does that? With, so it's like looking at it as a zoning, a, a water overlay, flooding overlay?
Or not? Yeah, I think it's mostly just making sure your boundaries match up. But that, I mean, in your language.
Yeah, Michael said that is, I don't think we have a zone that is not impacted in some way by either flood or a flood.
Okay.
I don't think I can think of it off the top of my head.
Having, having zoning districts not overlap would be one of the jobs we're setting out on.
And, and when, I don't know when a property is impacted by, is in a, a theme district, a flood area, is this thing? Or when you actually go to, if it is going to be developed or if there is a permit, you actually have to go in and get, don't you actually have to go in and get the elevations? And, I mean, you have to look at it beyond the map scale, level.
We use the map as the reference point.
But then you go in and check it. Right?
Then the landowner, if it's in question, the landowner then has to.
Get a letter of modification.
Right.
At that point, actually. Go get an engineer, just to say beyond.
And then it's a conditional review.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Because there are, there are buildings, plenty of buildings already in the flood hazard area.
And it changes.
Right.
Well, the.
It can, the flood.
It will, I mean, it will change.
Change.
In the, in five, within five years, it is going to change. And that'll work, you know, it'll determine who else to get flood insurance, basically.
Right.
Yeah, why is it going to change in five years?
Because they're updating their modeling. Because when they did it before, they basically just evolved a big map and drew what they thought it was. And what we have, I mean, especially with GIS, like this is ways of then compared to what they did on their dot matrix printers in 1985.
So.
Which was carried over from before that.
Right, which is probably from, well before, from topographical maps. Okay, so I heard, I heard one vote for take it out. But that our zoning administrator would like it to be at least considered as we sort of move on. So maybe it doesn't make sense here, but.
I almost think that some of the verbiage in regards to this in the land use section actually would make sense.
More sense than having it here. Okay. And then this, we had, we talked about encouraging participation, sort of increasing knowledge of flood preparation. I think that is kind of the same thing of having, I don't know who's going to lead open house style meetings and promote more discussion, so maybe taking out the, this last one or combining it with encouraging more awareness and discussion of flood prep.
If you do leave the, that in, I would get rid of the via front porch forum, that's what I say that is. This is an eight-year plan.
We have to leave it around.
Yeah, I mean, listing a specific technology doesn't make sense.
I almost think personally about getting rid of that one and pulling that number four down into the policies to support the first goal of work to make town of Bristol a flood resilient community.
We forgot about that.
Yeah.
That would be my personal.
Yeah, I would take that last one off. And I, I like work to make the town of Bristol flood resilient community as long as we know what that means.
Right.
Maybe it should be.
Find any.
Well, we should link it to something.
Yeah, I think what I had made a note to myself was to make that a more general goal of flood resilience. And then if, if there are specific programs that we would reference, that that would be further down in the policies of working towards a specific flood resilience program.
Again, the term flood is on communities, fine, as long as you define it somewheres.
Then what it is?
And just pointing it to another, my, my concern is if you just link it straight up to a state program, as we know, the programs, they change names and or relevance on a regular basis.
Well, you could list, you could do a bullet point of what that means, a criteria.
Well, that's what I'm saying, utilize existing criteria to create sort of a useful way of flood resilient community. Just to find it somewhere.
All right, so if I write this up and resend it and post it, is that okay for folks for now for this section? Does that seem?
See what it looks like.
It's pretty convoluted right now. Are you going to rewrite it?
See his notes.
I'm going to rewrite it.
Okay.
See my notes. You make a lot more notes than you need to, or marks.
Okay, so we went to, to get started on the land use section. We didn't realize that this is not going to get done tonight. So. So I sent out a draft. It adds language about the flood resilience things that we just talked about. And.
A lot of policies.
Are we on land use now?
Yes, in fact. The land use, you'll notice there was some highlighting, and that was ones that appeared to me like they might be possible ones to reduce.
Now, this is just to remind everybody, this is all existing with the exception of the two.
Red.
Red.
So your red is to take out then?
No. The red is additions. The yellow in the.
The yellow is.
Goals, policies, there's not any in actions, are ones that just on a very quick glance look like they might be either combinable or removable.
So.
But I didn't want to start doing that because I know this has been a contentious section.
And I.
It's gotten a lot of attention.
Chris is really the person who was on the board with Bill at the time. You want to give a little background? That this, well, I'll just say this section held up the plan for over a year.
Obviously, and, and it all smacked up in the center of it, and the whole reason was the gravel pit.
Yeah, so.
The gravel pit project. And that's why, you'll see, there's an extraction aspect of it. The, the planning areas were created because of that so that there could be an exclusion zone without, without having to include, because the way our, our zones are laid out, there was no good way to protect, quote unquote, protect the village from the gravel. So we created these three planning districts or zone areas. And then it just got deeper and deeper.
And then that's why there's how many, there are nine, there are 17 policies?
With subsections.
Oh, yeah.
So I was told by several people, don't change land use.
I see a lot that's got, got great fodder in there.
So.
And I guess part of what I was highlighting is ones that don't seem like they're land use related. Or at least could, would need to be ordered in a way that, but I also don't want to start a giant fight about.
No, no.
As if it's already been sort of worked out to a reasonable point.
I mean, personally, I, reopening the land use is not a bad thing. This is, this is probably the.
This is kind of the.
The meat and potatoes of, of your plan. This is where, where you want to see things done and not done in your community. So the, the rest sort of build around this. I mean, like, if you think about it, like, you like, well, we just talked about all the flood stuff, you sort of look at that to say, oh, based on that information, our land uses should be axed. When you talk about your walkability and population.
Well, it leads us, it all leads up to this. This is, it's closer to the future.
And this is.
So, and I think the text part and the zones, and that's all, we're not going to be changing that.
You're not?
I disagree with that.
All right. Well, then this is what we're going to.
All right, and, and the reason I said in, in a minute, we need to review it and see if you need to change the text on it. This original plan was adopted 2012, correct? So we are, it's already 10 years old. It won't be, it won't be.
I mean, from adoption, but.
Yeah.
All right, okay, let's say eight, and then we have to redo it, what? Another eight, enough that statute is now has to be redone every eight years? So without making any changes, you're saying that for 16 years, no change in land use in our, in our town makes sense?
Well, it's true. I would, I, instead of picking away at the, it's pretty, it's pretty conceptual, and it's a pretty conceptual conversation in the description of these areas. So I'm curious, what are some of the things that people would feel they think should be?
I think given our time tonight, maybe we should introduce this. No, I think we should. I don't, I don't think we should.
Well, no, I would, I, I was thinking some big statements.
I, I started looking at this and I'm not prepared to give a lot of thought or discussion on it right now. But, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly open to an overview and everything, but I think there's a lot of, I want to get more comfortable with this before I start talking to you.
Right, okay, well, then.
Sounds like a topic for one B.
Right, definitely. They talked about it for two years, I think. The last group, so.
And you were saying we have lots of time earlier.
No, I was, I kind of, we need to scoot right over this.
Yeah, she said no changes, let's.
I mean, this is, we do have to remember, this isn't, we're not writing a new plan. We're updating.
Right.
And that doesn't mean we can't make changes that we don't think are necessary, but.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at things also that may need to be.
Right, right, right.
It should be a living document.
Right, I'm, so you know what I'm saying, though. I'm not saying that we don't touch it at all, but a lot of towns will do updates and, you know, they don't even update their, like, population, you know?
We didn't last time.
We didn't?
In 2017, we didn't change anything. When we did our last update.
Oh, okay.
I've heard some town names.
It's one, it says the town plan anticipates continued population growth exponentially.
True. Okay, well, then along with reading the subdivision regs, I personally feel this is more. is more important to be focusing on right now, because we have to get this done, we have to get everything done, but this is a lot more complicated. I mean, I don't know, maybe yes, maybe no, but in terms of if people have, you know, strong feelings about this, let's, let's get them out on the table. Either, either, you know, in, you know, comments sent to Andrew, or so that we can then talk about it next time.
Yeah, I think if folks can, can take a look at it in the upcoming week, and then some comments, or I guess we have a month, so several weeks. So basically, the existing map of land use planning areas is this one, and I'll make sure that's up, and maybe we can resend this with it, and then the land use section, and with an eye towards simplifying goals and policies, kind of go through and look at those, and we could do a straw poll.
So what kind of time, time schedule, because the seventeenth is going to be subdivision, or is it going to be land use?
Could be multiple things.
Given the way this, we're going tonight, yes, that's an appropriate answer.
I mean, to be honest with you, you really should do your land use first, because you talked about things like densities and so, and I mean, you're talking about your growth patterns and.
Right.
Growth patterns.
So is there another place we should consider meeting on the third and keep that meeting going?
Maybe.
Why can't we meet here? There's something going on.
Not both day, but.
Where were you?
Oh, both day.
Both day.
All right, maybe we do do that and just talk about land use.
Could meet a.
Just talk about land use.
Street gear or something.
You want to look into that, Chris?
Oh, where, where we can meet?
The third, uh, third, at Howden?
Yeah, Howden Hall, I think was the suggestion, Ben, and made it quickly, if not the fire station.
Okay.
Or the fire station would be great, too.
Can you let us know?
So we're going to have a meeting in the beginning of March, March third. And that's going to be land use?
What did he say?
Strike the no meeting.
Darn it.
Deleted it.
Okay.
Land use.
March third is also the Vermont primary, is that right? The presidential.
It's Super Tuesday.
Is there a, if you're going to give us a place for that or?
For what?
For all the Super Tuesdays dates, which we are one of.
Oh.
Aren't you? Is it North Carolina?
Comes around every four years.
Okay.
I think North Carolina is, one of the Carolinas.
I'm missing on that date, that's okay.
Well, send in your, your comments.
Do we need to send out a search party? I'm missing.
I'll be on the beach.
Oh, okay.
Carlos Seals. Come out of the ocean.
Okay, so discussion of land use on the third, still, still aiming for Adam on the seventeenth?
Let's plan for that, yeah.
The seventeenth again is subdivision, correct, or land use, or it could be both?
Seventeenth is Adam, subdivision.
Seventeenth is Adam, okay.
Because you can't be here, so.
And so, and then we'll talk about land use on the third, which, yeah.
Seventeenth of March?
March.
Okay, the other section I saw was scenic historic and cultural resources, which is pretty descriptive and has a very short kind of a model, goal, policy, actions. So I don't know that we really need to go through it, but maybe folks can take a look at it if they haven't already.
Well, I just have a few typos, nothing else.
Typos?
Here. Nothing, okay, me.
I didn't write that up. Oh, probably the part I wrote, yeah. We're a part of that.
I did. Okay, if you'll send those to me then.
It's all draft, it's all draft, that's what we're here for.
Plus you misspelled creamy.
I misspelled creamy?
I didn't, yeah, I did not write that wrong. He's not from, that's why, he's from North Carolina. None of E's, most likely, right?
It's a flood resilience, a pace.
Okay. I'll find it. How do you spell it?
Oh. C R E E M A. Dash in there, that's worse.
Isn't the village creamy stand? C R E E M E E?
No.
Not with a dash.
How long? You should know.
Yeah. It's one E on here.
Just say it to Andrew.
We'll just get some.
Not a capital M.
Apparently I don't stop there.
Have you had one yet?
Oh, yeah, regularly. I know they're closed right now.
I walked a dog the other day, and she pulled for it.
She did, memory kicked in and.
That's good, keep that attitude.
All right, I'll, I'll correct that. Uh, is there anything else you needed for your agenda?
We need to make a motion.
What was that, Kevin?
Make a motion adjourn, that's Rob's.
Oh, you go right ahead.
Make a motion adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
No second?
Yeah.